Okay, this is the meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency. We are recording?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Yeah, we have Larry Whitaker.
Here.
Debbie Hamilton. Joe Grossman.
I'm here.
Michelle Sumner.
Here.
Tom Boggs.
Yeah.
And Seth Vincent.
Here.
Are we on to?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So anyone wishing to speak before the Urban Renewal Agency, evening. On any subject that will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into recorder, forms are available on the signing table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence and do your work. Is that supposed to be part of this? Okay. Public comment. Purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up through the microphone. We have none, thank you. Okay, next on this agenda is the consent agenda of June 14th, 2021 minutes. Need a motion, second.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda from Monday, June 14th, 2021.
A second, pal.
Any discussion? With vote please.
Larry Whitaker.
Hi.
Debbie Hamilton.
Hi.
Joe Grossman.
Hi.
Michelle Sumner.
Hi.
Tom Boggs. Seth Vincent.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, my thought on the agency business category is to appoint a chair with the re-presidency of the mayor, previous mayor. Was the chair, now we have the open for the spot. So nominations for chair.
Did you just nominate yourself?
Yeah, I nominate Tom Boggs.
Who's vice chair then?
He's already vice chair, so he can't be yet.
Okay.
He could.
Well, you could, but then you'd need a vice chair.
Well, you got a motion in a second, can't go back. All right. I'll do the chair, but by resign my vice chair position.
So now you need to appoint a vice chair.
Now we need to call for a vote.
Okay, I'll write a second thing.
I know these are just technicalities and they're. So. Just walk us through it so we can get down.
Call for the vote please.
Okay.
The second.
Are we actually voting on my nomination?
Motion.
And then Larry seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Or did we just have that too? Do we vote please?
Larry Whitaker.
Hi.
Debbie Hamilton. Joe Grossman.
Hi.
Michelle Sumner.
Hi.
Tom Boggs.
Hi.
Seth Vincent.
Hi.
So now we've got a nomination for a vice chair.
A second is.
Any other nominations? You have a first and a second for Debbie Hamilton? Discussion? No discussion yet? Trust me, it's a hard job, somebody has to.
Larry Whitaker.
Hi.
Debbie Hamilton. Joe Grossman.
Hi.
Michelle Sumner.
Hi.
Tom Boggs.
Hi.
Seth Vincent.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now we're on to agency business regarding parking lot purchase development. That's the area behind the backside brewing on a staff report.
Yes, you do have a staff report and the heavy lifting was done by the city staff. Leave the discussion on this, we also know, found from Chad, we also require requires a resolution as well.
So we'll be bringing that resolution back to you on September 13th. And so at any rate, the downtown development was identified as one of those core projects and included in our pilot project. From the initial funding. And so with that, parking is one of the big needs in downtown. We took a request through the Urban Renewal Task Force. August 4th, and they have recommended to approve the. Lot that's directly behind backside and to the museum. And kind of the pocket park, and so with that, we took an average of the assessed values of the those vacant properties in the area. Arrived at $40,000, the owners of the property agreed. And so with that, we'd like to move forward, obviously after the signing of a resolution that we would bring back to you if we have. Your positive feedback and we will then. What we wanted to do is include the cost of development, which comes to about $63,510. That can be high, we're hoping, based on the estimates that we have and hopefully cost point. Increasing anymore, but or they do go down. So the total amount to develop that lot into a paid parking lot would be $103,510 with the purchase price.
I guess my only surprise was I, I thought it was the whole parking lot back here and then I got this little red square and I thought, wow, that's much smaller than I thought.
And we would like to down the road add to those if we get consensus from the property owners to participate. We get some positive feedback and we haven't really worked on, talked to the others just yet, so. That's in the future plans hopefully, but at this time we're discussing.
And what we have funding for.
Is that part right next to owned by a different person?
We have a question from Wayne Ellsworth who is listening on Zoom. He says, does it include behind the body shop?
Not at this time.
You've got that Wayne?
So Chris and I have.
Got it.
Acquiring that small piece of property development, is there a concern about the degradation of the asphalt? Around the perimeter of that of driving over and basically breaking up the edges over time and too quickly. And that paint job just basically cracking out from the edges.
So we're not terribly concerned about that on the south side. We're gonna pave right and the smooth paved right and including alley.
Yeah.
We'll pave the alley as well. And then on the east side, there'll be a, we'll pave right up to what's there and there'll be stoppers at those parking places. People can't drive over that. On the west side, there may be a little degradation, but when we. Whenever we get around to. Doing that next phase, that direction will do a neat line cut and attack well, and it'll be. There'll be a transition.
Yeah.
You'll be able to see a slight line there, but. So we may have to. We may lose three inches of it or something to that edge and.
And to the north one all the way up to first.
So the north will have, I believe our plan is included a sidewalk and approaches. So that will be, that'll be bolstered there by, by those and. It just be to the west and we'll just do a pat.
I don't know, I don't know if there would be cost effect to just put stopper there to keep people from driving across that.
We can look into that, I think that's the way that that parking lot. Situated, I believe that people are gonna probably, well, they might not need to, but it would be a lot. Handier if they can pull off into the gravel, in other words, they could use our pavement. But if there's no one there, they can also use the gravel right on the other side of that and we may be able to curb that or bumper that in some way so that they had to come back out. We've looked into that, Larry.
Whatever, whatever makes sense.
It's second guest.
Definitely look into it. So is the intent of this. Parking facility for downtown shopping or is it?
Yeah.
If I drive by there and I. Five hours in the day, during the day, work hours, stuff like that, that whole parking lot is filled with vehicles. So it's like people are currently, I guess, using it for just park there and I don't know what to do.
Right, the intent is for downtown parking and it would be marketed accordingly.
And it's been, so since we had actually kind of roped it off and stuff back when we were doing Central to kind of get some of the parking off of Central and put it back there. We had worked with property owners at that time in order to. Get the parking off of Central when we were grinding in lane, so with that, if people are already using it, so now to have it as improved is.
Are we going to have any kind of like time limit working there because right now in those that lots, there are a lot of abandoned vehicles out there. They're just left a long period of time.
So how do we forget that? Once we purchase it, it's in the city ordinance, so then our city ownership, so then our unit. And so that's, that's if it's enforced.
Right. That sounds good.
We have toy companies. We've certainly posted.
They can tag them.
Any other questions? Okay, so we need a motion in a second for. Parking lot purchase and development. Welcome back, we want you to vote to approve the res, moving forward with purchasing and bringing back the.
The resolution will follow.
Yeah, I make a motion that we. Approve the funded request for the purchase of development of the above identified lot in the amount of $103,510.
Second.
Deb second.
It's kind of hard to hear. A motion in a second for approval of parking lot purchase. That'll have the address behind. Is the parking lot going to come back to us once the you guys. The review.
I can add a little bit to that. So the intent is to yes, have a design, but also to have a conceptual drawing for those future slots if we move forward with it so they fall together.
We can add those in your packets just to keep you informed.
Okay.
Think the design worked for that lot, it's not going to be too complicated. The complication will be tying all the other properties in together, which is why we want to make a pass at it now, so it will make sense down the road.
And also the discussion was for the current stations.
Larry Whitakers.
Hi.
Debbie Hamilton.
Hi.
Joe Grossman.
Hi.
Michelle Sumner.
Hi.
Tom Boggs. Seth Whitaker. Seth Whitaker. Seth Winston.
When I saw the name Whitaker on there, oh, Seth Vincent.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I didn't say McKnight.
Okay, so next are is downtown, we have a grant application, so we have two.
You have applications for 119 West Central and 121 West Central, which is Beasley Heights and the Body Shop. Uh, the Beasley Heights is for $12,000, the Body Shop for 25, with a request to follow for additional funds because they believe their project is going to be pricey.
They have a larger storefront, it's double the width, double the height, so.
Double the ugly.
Yeah. They have requested to come back and request, and I believe it would be an additional $25,000. But they have, if they, in a sense, most of your structures are the 25 by 100, so the storefront's only 25 feet where they are at least.
The across, the request is for 25, which is the, the current limit. So.
They.
Anybody is welcome to do that, whether it will be approved or not is a different question because it'll depend on funding and other variables that we may not even understand right now. So this is just to get their project going and it meets all of our requirements. And I think you've seen, if you've looked at the, the packet, there's a wealth of material provided by both of the applications.
Is this actually more than necessary? Because I know there's a couple of people that are in Ruston, but I don't know if the paperwork's intimidating them not to apply.
It is intimidating, I would have them come to us because we are more than welcome to help them.
Absolutely, because it's not.
It's, we do it every day, so. We would be happy to help anyone that would like to apply.
Okay. So the motion.
Alright, a motion to approve the funding request for Beasley Heights, drafting the design, and the amount of $12,000 and the Body Shop self-fitness, and the amount of $25,000, but the potential to apply for additional.
Any further discussion?
Let's see if I can pull this off. Larry Whitaker.
Hi.
Debbie Hamilton. Joe Grossman.
Hi.
Michelle Sumner.
Hi.
Tom Boggs.
Hi.
Seth Vincent.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, will we have any other reports or discussions this evening? In that case, we are adjourned from the Urban Renewal Agency. Nine minutes, council.
Recorder on. That currently stands for white slate. What the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Sumner.
Here.
Counselor Boggs.
Here.
Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Vincent.
Here. Introduction media tonight, is anybody from media present? I don't see anyone, so thank you. So. The council selections and appointments, staff report, city reporter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Diane Harris, City Recorder. The city received five applications for council, however, Andrew Snow did drop out due to personal reasons. So we have Gary Daigle, Wayne Ellsworth, Sean Smalley, and Lisa Woods that have applied. There are several options on your staff report that. City Attorney Chad Jacobs explained to us that we cannot do a secret ballot, however, the options are that you could name your first and second favorite verbally and then use your ballots once we get. Would I say that, once you narrow it down, thank you. Or you can write your first and second choices on the ballot and hand them in, when you do hand them in, we will call your name out and, and state what you voted or who you voted for, who your second or third choices, or you can nominate from the floor, whatever your choices are. I will leave it to council to decide.
So just because some of us are hurting here, can you go through those choices one more time?
Yes. You can verbally provide your first and second choice, followed by a vote by ballot process until the majority vote, vote is reached. You can record your first and second choice on the ballots in front of you, each of you have those. And the process continues until the majority vote is reached, or you can have nominations from the floor.
Okay. So at this time, what I would like to do is wait on Zoom votes.
Yes.
So I'd like to give, I think we have all four candidates here, like do you, a few minutes to come up to the podium, introduce yourselves, we can match a face to the name. We've all read your application files, but just give me a chance to talk before the group and let's ask a couple of questions. So we'll start with Gary Dangle, please. I don't know, it's the first one on my list, so.
Yes.
You're special.
Here we are, I remember years ago when nobody. So the water improvement, huh? Anyhow. A little bit about why I'm doing this is because, you know, I've been kind of watching what's going on around the nation or state in some of the big cities and it's scary. And I'm afraid that could happen everywhere and the only way it's not going to happen is the right people need to come up and, and get involved and volunteer like this. I don't know what's going to happen to our country. Kind of scary. As far as specific goes. Probably our like business, I'd like to see businesses make it easy for businesses to be here and help them as much as we can. And I believe we already do that to a point, but having been in business in California, I saw when too much government could do to me. It's terrible, if after a while you feel like you're just an enemy of the government. I'd really hate to see that happen here, I don't think it should, it shouldn't happen anywhere. And the other thing is, I'm kind of concerned by seniors, being a senior myself. At a certain age and you're tired. Retired, but having the money to pay for a lot of things. Could crop up as a factor and I'd like to, I'd like to be part of that decision making. And the other thing is, Sutherland is really growing, it's amazing how many new homes are being built. And that means there's going to be a lot of new people here. And I think that. Things, decisions that you make right now are going to be really important for the future. And I, I'm not sure it's good or bad, but hopefully planning, good planning is what's going to make a difference for that. That's really about all I have to say, do you have questions for me?
Any council have a question?
So what policy changes would you support to revitalize the downtown area and so on?
Policies? Well, the redevelopment thing, I think is going to be really good for it. I think we need to kind of look at what's going on, but you know, if I were to open up a business, of course it here be, I obviously already have one, but. I'd have to think about being out by the freeway because that's where the traffic is. So I don't know how we're going to bring business downtown and I think we need to come up with something, maybe a gimmick even, that brings people in. Because why else would they go downtown? And local businesses really don't get supported by our community very much. I'd like to see that change, I, I don't know how it will, but maybe there's some positive things we could do to affect that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what's your current business? Pardon me? What's your current business? Well, I, I have a manufacturing business and I say that because it's really small, I'm it. But what I make is parts for Model A hot rods, basically I make chassis and chassis components and 32 Fords, things like that. I've been in this business like 50 years, so I've done it for a while. Also, most of my sales are mail orders, so I don't really, don't do a lot of local business, but I do do a lot of mail order. Are you still? Are you still active with the chamber? No, I'm not. I decided somebody else needs to be active with the chamber. Obviously, yeah, we did too. Thank you.
Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need to maybe give you a couple of minutes.
Wonderful, can you guys see me up there?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm at home with COVID right now or else I would be there. But anyway, my name's Wayne Ellsworth, I've been living in Sutherland for five years now, live at 626 Terrace. I'm a outreach coordinator for Adapt Primary Care Integrated Health. And I do also own a private business with my wife called Adventure Bound Easy RV Rentals, it's sort of like a, a mobile Airbnb. And the reason why that I wanted to run for city council was mainly because I have been. I've been blessed with the fact that I've been able to help out with the city of Winston and the city of Roseburg on many different issues when it comes to. Well, mainly in Winston with economic development, with urban renewal and, and helping out, being a board member of the Chamber of Commerce. And, and other boards and then with the city of Roseburg helping out with primarily like homeless solutions with a couple of different groups that I chair. And I would love to take all of that information that I've learned and actually plug it into the town that I live in. So there are some things. That I, I think when I think of Sutherland, and I think this town has the potential to be a lot more than what it is. And what you guys have done in the last five years that I've been here has just been amazing. I love the streets, I love the sidewalks, I love the parks. And when we do, because I'm on the fire department for Sutherland too as a volunteer, when we do the Christmas parades, they do the, the Halloween on the streets. They do the musics in the parks, we have got a country music festival coming in this year. There's just many things that I believe that, that the city of Sutherland is doing right, and I just want to be a bigger part of that. I want to take what I've learned and be able to negotiate that with some of my contacts and hopefully bring in a little bit more, a little bit more to Sutherland. And with even listening. Even listening to.
I will talk to you guys in a little bit. Can you mute yourself, please?
I did it.
Sorry about that, Wayne.
It was, anyway. Um, it's, it's always fun when you're playing with technology. So anyway, I just love what's going on in Sutherland, I believe that there's, there's so much more to come. And I just want to be a bigger part of it, and if I can do that, I'd really, really appreciate it. So you guys got a big decision and I'll leave you to it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to ask my question, what policy changes would you support to revitalize the downtown area and settle?
I think businesses being open would be kind of, kind of cool. I don't know how else to say that, it's, it's just like, I, I work until 5:30 every day. And my wife works until 5:30 every day. If we want to go do something, we luckily have a few restaurants downtown now that we can make some sort of loop, but there are also other businesses that, that can be open. And I called, and for lack of better words, when we first moved here, I called it secondhand Sutherland because it seemed like every shop was a secondhand store. And I believe that it could be more than that. But that, I guess that's something that I would work in is, is more of a I guess, help out in a way that we can get these stores to stay open just a little bit later and create that downtown atmosphere where people would want to stay around. I look to cities like, and it, it sounds terrible just because there's so many people in Ben, but I spend time in Ben and I love the the whole downtown feel. And I would love to find out a way, of course, with everybody's help, working with, with the chamber and and other, you know, small business and folks to try to create that kind of atmosphere where people interact and and they have fun. And being a part of these, these couple of music in the parks and having the food trucks down there and, you know, watching with the police departments and the fire departments interacting with the folks, that's what small town is about. And I'm seeing it more and more. And I think we should just keep on working on that. But the businesses, I think they need to stay open in order to create that kind of atmosphere.
Joe, Joe had a question.
Wayne, I have a question. On your resume, 2016 to present, you make a statement, I've been a vice president of the Sutherland Volunteer Association for four years. Can you tell us a little bit about that and how often we meet?
The Sutherland Volunteer Association?
Yeah.
Is that what you said? So the Sutherland Volunteer Association is based off of the fire department. So I've been the vice president of that, and we have done fundraising when it comes to creating dollars to plug back into the community. We've also done a lot of fire prevention stuff with the schools and and BlackBerry Festival and other Halloween festivals and those kinds of things in the park. We've also done Christmas. We would get donations for Christmas presents and dollars to buy Christmas presents and to buy food. And we would actually supply food boxes for every Thanksgiving for 15 families in Sutherland and then 10 seniors. And then for Christmas, we would do the same thing. So we would go out and we collect donations and and presents, and we would distribute them with the fire trucks around Thanksgiving and and Christmas.
Okay. I need to clarify what I had because I didn't associate that with the fire department.
Yeah, that's our own organization.
Wayne, thank you very much. Or yes, Larry, do you have a question?
Well, when I was reading through your resume, I see that you are involved in lots of things. And I just wonder, where do you find the time to be involved with the city of Sutherland when you're involved with these other cities and and all these other programs?
That's actually a wonderful question. So I'm actually looking to dial back what I'm doing in these other areas. And COVID really put a, you're, you're looking at things that on that resume of things that have been done. And that's in the past. And a lot of those things I'm no longer doing. Like a majority of the things in the city of Winston. Right now, we are working currently on things in Roseburg when it comes to homelessness, because we've got an immediate needs group that's looking to clean up the parks and find a place for people to go and to create a priority sheet on how we're going to, I guess, attack homelessness in Roseburg to be able to place these folks. And that's really where I'm devoting a majority of that extra time to. Other than that, I have my job and then I have my RV business, which is the company that my wife and I own. So a lot of those things have been dialed back a lot because of COVID. And I've done that a little bit on purpose also because I knew that I was going to be applying for this position. So I will have time to dedicate to this if you give me the chance.
Okay. Well, since I currently work in Roseburg, Winston, Myrtle Creek, Canyonville, Days Creek, Camas Valley, Glendale, to assist in many arenas. That just sounds like a lot of stuff.
Yeah. So my job, my job with Adapt, being an outreach coordinator is being out in the public and promoting a lot of the things that Adapt's integrated health has to offer. I also I run a mobile shower unit to be able to promote hygiene within the homeless community of those towns. So by doing that, it's door, it's during my regular hours of operation, which is going to be from eight o'clock in the morning till 4:30 at night. That's my standard shift. I, I don't, I mean, I wish I could be retired at this point. That would be excellent. But unfortunately, I gotta be able to provide for my family. And I run the, the regular eight o'clock to 4:30 schedule. And then I'm usually home by five, 5:30.
Wayne, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
No problem.
John Small.
Hello, council. I'm Sean Smalley. Born and raised here in Sutherland for 44 years now. I have a couple of small businesses here in town. I've recently graduated and have their own families now. So I have a private more time to spend here in town helping out. And I think I have a lot to offer. Obviously done a great job with talent, you know, what's good. If you're to ask my strengths and weaknesses, my biggest weaknesses, I would speak. Struggling. So please. So yeah, so I could definitely help out. I'm pretty good at researching problems and issues.
I have the one I've been asking everybody. What policy changes would you support to revitalize the downtown area?
Well, I definitely wouldn't be coming in thinking I'm going to save the world and rewrite all his policies. So without looking at him and researching them, I wouldn't.
Question I have is if you are given this appointment on council, do you plan on running for that same seat in three and a half years?
I guess I could tell you in three and a half years. It'd be hard to say now because I'm not sure what to expect coming into it. You know, I've never been on that side of the table. So it'd be hard to say. But I think if it worked out well and everybody got along, advanced the city, then yeah, absolutely.
Being a business owner in Sutherland. What suggestion would you have to the city council to do changes that you would like to see?
You know, to be honest, I can't think of any because we've been successful with our business and we've worked well with the city, you know, building our shop downtown. So right offhand, honestly, we've done well. So I have none.
John, thank you very much. We'll save the best for last. Lisa Wood.
Mayor and city council, thanks for the opportunity for me to speak to you about who I am, where I come from. I'm an original hometown girl. I did grow up in Roseburg. But we moved back and we moved back from the big city and moving into a small community. At first I was like, oh no, there's going to be nothing to do. But Sutherland, I fell in love with. Absolutely fell in love with Sutherland. Just seeing the beauty that's here, the potential for all the wonderful things that Sutherland can offer. We wouldn't have settled here had we not found at a place we could call home, someplace we could work, live and play. And, you know, with that, you know, we have, we are starting our business, which I put in my application with the city. And so hopefully that'll, I'll get all the final paperwork on that. And hopefully that'll be happening. We've already signed a lease and are building. We'll be right by Abby's. We're opening a martial arts school someplace for kids to come and adults. So we have, we want to offer something for the community. I don't want to just sit back idly and do nothing. I wanted to jump in headfirst. When I first came here, I was like, how can I get involved? Planning Commission was, was part of that process. And with that, you know, I was disappointed, but I couldn't apply for city council when I first moved here because I didn't have enough time in the city. Well, I've been here for a minute now. And, you know, something that Mayor Vincent told me, I remember the, the day that I was kind of declined from, from that. He said, don't give up. So I'm back here and I'm not giving up. I, I want to make a difference here. So a little bit of more background about who, my family. I've been married to my husband now for almost 28 years. We've got three children, two of which are grown, when is, lives in San Diego still. And our son just signed up and he's serving the US Army in basic training right now. So then our youngest son is entering his senior year in high school at Sutherland. He plans to play football and basketball. We want to be a part of this community throughout in, in business. Some of the strengths that I bring is I'm currently the director for the Small Business Development Center downtown. We help small businesses. So I think it's a perfect fit on being able to help our downtown and in rural areas develop a plan so that they can grow and develop. We see businesses that they look like they're shuttered still. How do we help them develop? How do we get people off the freeway into downtown? How do we get them here? We have a natural resource right out here, Cooper Creek. What an opportunity to let people know that it's there. So I mean, there's just so many wonderful things that Sutherland has to offer. We just have to get that out there. So do any of you have any questions for me?
Same question. What policy changes would you support to revitalize the downtown area?
Well, I think one of the things that's already happening is the urban revitalization. That's a great start, but I don't think that that's the, the answer necessarily. It may be beautifying downtown. But what are the plans for the small businesses? We don't see them open, or it doesn't appear that they're open. What policies can we help develop that will help those owners of those businesses be incentivized to actually open their doors to bring in economic development? So I, without looking at the policies themselves, but you know, one of the key, I would think would be a key thing when you first get off the freeway, what's the first thing you see? There, there's things that kid, people are going to drive by. There's no reason for people to come further into town. So developing something as people get off the freeway to know that there's something here to offer them. We've got beautiful, we've got a beautiful trail right around Cooper Creek. We have Flatiron where people can kayak. All of these wonderful, we have the dog park. We've got so many wonderful things here. And we've got a community that sticks together through good times and bad. These people stand up and support one another. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's my answer. Is there any other questions?
Any questions? I would ask my question, but I'm pretty sure I would. Yeah. Would you run again in three and a half years?
As it stands to the way I feel right this moment, absolutely I would.
Any last questions?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. So I appreciate all the applicants taking a few minutes, just kind of sharing with us a little more insight. We have a match face of the name. So at this time, council to make a motion to appoint one of these applicants. Do we need to go through our choices of how we do this again?
I can certainly do that. Each counselor can be called on verbally to provide their first and second choice, followed by a vote of the ballot process until majority vote vote is reached. Or each counselor records their first and second choice on their ballot. And those will be read after collected. The process continues until majority vote is reached or nominations from the floor. So those are your three choices to verbally give your first and second and then use your ballot or to just start off using your ballots with your first and second.
But the ballots we have to use by quite us physically writing them down.
Yes.
Use the, the format in front.
The format.
We can circle those and turn them in.
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, each counselor has their own name on the ballots. And so that, that way we know who votes for who.
It depends on, if you want to start off with your ballots, a one and a two would be great. Unless.
Use the highlighter to mark them if you want.
Yeah, unless you want to.
I'm, I'm going to make the suggestion that we use our ballots, circle, put a number one, circle, put a number two. Pass those into the city recorder and we'll start the process.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
But I'm going.
Want to say it. You guys made it really difficult.
Yes.
I want to take a moment to ask the person that joined us that says the iPhone. Could you identify yourself, please, for our records? I asked her to unmute.
She muted herself.
See.
Wayne, are you there?
It's the person on the iPhone.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we still there. Yeah, what's recorded is iPhone down here.
Yeah, it says iPhone, but.
So let's go ahead and make our, our first and second choices. You want to pass them all to?
Pass them all around the Debbie and we can.
Yep. I don't know who that is. Okay, so they're using.
You might.
Our attorney's going to figure. Everybody knows. Well, he's not jumping up and down and shaking his finger at me yet. So I know, I know. Yeah.
Lisa, don't forget we have the Fort, the Fort One Community Park.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because you weren't the one who eats.
Yes.
I was going that way. That's the way I was thinking. I was thinking that's you're right.
So I'm going to read these off. Counselor Hamilton chose Sean Smalley as number one and Lisa Woods as number two choice. Counselor Grousman chose Sean Smalley as number two choice. Lisa Woods is number one. Counselor Sumner chose Lisa Woods as number one. Sean Smalley, number two. Counselor Boggs chose Sean Smalley as number one. Gary Daigle is number two. Counselor Whitaker chose Lisa Woods as choice number one and Wayne Ellsworth, choice number two. Mayor Vincent shows Hamilton, nevermind. Mayor Vincent chose Sean Smalley as number one and Lisa Woods as number two. Choice. So it looks like we've narrowed it down.
How many number one votes?
We have Lisa Woods has three number ones and two number twos.
And what about Sean Smalley?
Sean Smalley has three number ones and two number twos.
All right. So there's your top two.
So on your second ballot sheet.
See, that's why, why staff members have worked on these more than.
So what, what are you doing there? So you just circle your number one?
Yeah, circle, circle your choice. Can I put number one by it?
If you insist. We have a couple of. And there's a.
Sing a song.
There's a chance with six of you, there will be a tie. And.
There is. We can do this all night.
That's correctabundo.
All right, hand them to the right.
We don't have.
Joe, you gave me another one again.
Yeah.
We have a tie, three votes for Lisa Woods, three votes for Sean Smalley.
So we do have a tie.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, we should we should read off who voted for which candidate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
Counselor Sumner, Lisa Woods. Counselor Whitaker, Lisa Woods. Counselor Grousman, Lisa Woods. Counselor Boggs, Sean Smalley. Mayor Vincent, Sean Smalley. Counselor Hamilton, Sean Smalley. Thank you, Chad.
So Chad, we're going to go through this one more time.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. What the charter says is that you all can use whatever process that you deem in the best interest of the city to choose a replacement. So you can certainly go through it one more time to see if someone changes their mind. You can have a discussion with each other. You could maybe call. Both of the two remaining candidates back up to see if they have anything else to say that may sway one vote, one way or the other. It's really up to you all to determine what you think is the best way to sort of break this tie. Um, so I would encourage you to keep a personal discussion about how you want to do that and then go through that process.
Okay, Council Summers asking for each candidate to come back up for any other further questions. Everybody okay with that?
That's why it's difficult.
Very. So John, would you come come back up to twenty, please?
Another chance to speak.
Asked away.
So. Why do you think you would make the best candidate?
Uh, I think because I've been here my whole life. Fifty years, I've had my business here for over twenty years. Um, I raised my boys through the school system. Um, I went through the school system. I was on the police force for a few years as a cadet. Yeah, I've been part of this town my whole life. Um, we have a successful business here in town. I've seen both sides of the city, the business side, and I'd like to see it from your guys' side. And you can help make some decisions business-wise and just citywide that could uh yeah, help move our city into the future. And have a place that my boys can do like I did, have a business that they're pretty proud of and raise their back to. So I think I've a lot to offer beyond the public speaking portion.
Any other questions?
What what is this?
Uh, the little truck shop right here, Mobile Diesel Service. Uh, no, that's my dad and grandpa's small truck. Ours is the old Trivaya building, uh, Mobile Diesel Service.
Oh, that's yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Smalley and Sons Construction, yeah, we have a contracting business.
Is that out of the area?
Construction business. Their works gets serious excavators, dump trucks. Pretty small, mainly my two boys and myself.
If you have job, will travel.
We do work in Cruz Bay, you know, Eugene and stuff like that. Yeah, we have twelve full-time employees. They're all local guys with families. Uh, four of our guys are under twenty-two years old and have babies, so. Yeah, we have a lot at stake, you know, being part of this town, so yeah, it's a big deal.
Any other questions? Lisa, would you come back up, please?
Again, thank you for another opportunity. Um. Hard to compete with someone who's been there, they're here their entire life. I understand that, but I think I bring a unique perspective. But I've seen things, how things have been in other places, so seeing how things can. Be better. I think, like I said before, Sutherland's a great place, but I think there's so much more potential for. It to be a great place, not just a little town where people don't know about it. So, you know, not only do we have our our soon-to-be martial arts school, where we're going to be able to help kids and families. A a place where it can be safe for them, someplace where they can enjoy, have fun, um, learn some really good skills. And then in addition to that, we have our low voltage cabling company too. So we have not one business, but we have two here in the city of Sutherland. So I don't know how much more I can add. Does anyone have any questions?
You made a statement in here that says, I want to be a part of making sure the voices of all capitalizes.
Absolutely. Equity, equality for everyone. I think everyone deserves to have a voice. So it doesn't matter if you're just a business owner or you're just a private citizen, whether you're wealthy or you're not wealthy. Whether you're homeless. I think every citizen of Sutherland should have a voice. So I think having people heard and, you know, growing up poor, I never thought that my my voice could be heard. And I know that it can, and I want other people to know that their voice can be heard. I want to, I want to. It, you know, let people know about education. I think that with 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 kids. A lot of kids in this area have never been given the opportunity for education. Letting them know that there's an opportunity for that, where they can be in business for themselves, letting them know that there's options. And I think Sutherland is a great place for that. Wonderful school here. Very concerned, one of the, one of the big differences I noticed that when we moved here and if our kids got behind in a grade. My my young man who is in the army, he does not like school. That's probably why he's in the army. He does not like it. But when his English grade slipped to an F. The school called me and said, hey, your kid's spelling, and it was, it was a personal phone call. It wasn't just automated. So I know this community cares. So I I just, I want to be a part of helping businesses, families, just just being involved. So that we can help grow and develop our small town.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, what's that? Great, so um, I I can second the the things that were said is. The two of you make this a very, very difficult decision. So um, I'm going to recommend we do one more round of our ballots. If anybody is is sweet or changed minds or anything like that, and we'll see what that outcome is. If if this comes into a tie again, and the council decides to draw straws, is that okay?
Or flip a coin.
Or flip a coin.
Yeah, as I said, the charter permits you to use whatever process you deem in the best interest of the city.
I like flexibility. That works out great.
I would like to say something that with the two of you being so. Close, making this difficult, the person that turns out not getting a seat. Uh, I would encourage that person to. Stay involved and every time there's an opening, maybe a mayor leaves, then.
The other two candidates too, who are right there. I mean, it's just a fluke of, I mean, Gary Dago, I've worked with him on so many things. He's. He's a selfless uh server. He's been great to work with. I have high regard and admiration for him. And so as much as you two may have come up here, I think there are two other candidates who should not be ignored and encouraged. To participate and get involved uh and some level in the community. And so anyway, I just wanted to say that because Mr. Ellsworth and uh Gary Diggle too are quality candidates. The best I've ever seen in terms of a bunch of my thirty years of city management, in which I could not look at the. Including Mr. Snow and say there was a reservation by any of you. You were just fantastic. So anyway, I just wanted to make that clear.
I didn't see you because Tammy. Otherwise, I would have said you also.
Yeah, Jerry, Jerry, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Jerry.
Appreciate it. Oh, really? I do. I do mean that. So we've got a hard decision. Let's do this one more round. And uh, let's see where we end up.
And as you all can tell, we have a big group here. We unbundled.
Okay, Mayor Vincent, Sean Smalley. Counselor Sumner, Sean Smalley. Counselor Grousman, Lisa Woods. Counselor Boggs, Sean Smalley. Counselor Whitaker, Sean Smalley. Debbie Hamilton, Sean Smalley. So we got fact one.
So let's just let me state for the record what's going to happen. You are a council elect. You can come sit up here at the chair and you can't, you don't have voting rights, but you can participate in the discussion. If the mayor will allow you to, uh, and then we'll swear you in at the next council meeting. Congratulations.
Apparently not.
The admin portion of.
So at this point, Chad, we need to have a motion. Yes, so do I have a motion? On the floor from the council?
Okay, yeah, I make a motion that. What are we doing?
A point.
A point, a point Sean Smalley to fill the vacant.
Term ending in January, in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's been mo- it's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for vote, please.
Okay, Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Grousman.
I.
Counselor Sumner.
I.
Counselor Boggs. Mayor Vincent.
I.
Motion carries.
So, Mrs. Molly, if you'd like, if you'd like to come up and sit on the bench, you're welcome to for the duration of our meeting. And that just get start getting comfortable, break, warm it in. Um, again, as uh city manager Jared Gillen said, I am very thankful and very blessed that we live in this community. That we have such awesome, wonderful citizens that want to step up, that want to be a part of the community. To Lisa Woods, Gary Dago, Wayne Ellsworth. Thank you guys very much. It is, it is very touching and it's humbling to know that we have members in our community that want to serve, that want to make a difference. I thank you very much. And as I've said before, appreciate your participation and willingness to continue. To look for those opportunities to serve our community. So thank you for your efforts. So. Moving on in our meeting today, anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out. A speaker form and turn it into a recorder. Forms are available on the sign-in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Public comment. The purpose of public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off-agenda items. A timeline of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come to the microphone. Our consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda for July twelfth.
The motion was seconded. To approve the consent agenda as presented in discussion. No discussion. Call for a vote.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Sumner. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Vincent.
I.
Motion carries.
Onto council business, uh, water services outside city limits. In the discussion, uh, staff report community development, please.
The staff report follow-up to the council, um, meeting on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. We've done some further research. We will not be required to update water master plan. Or we would be required to update water management and conservation plan. It's estimated approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars to do that. Still have to update some of the city's documents. Um, with that, and we're estimating about a hundred hours to change, to amend those documents. Because of our current situation and because we're just kind of in the first phase of construction out of Mount Pearl. I would like to recommend to city council that we. Put this on hold until October of twenty twenty-three. The reason I'm asking or I'd like to request this is we're going to go through this again, please, to consult the Mount Pearl next year. But we're actually going to start our shutdown at Mount Pearl a month earlier than we did this year. So we'll be starting our shutdown for construction, um, for the shutdown in March of twenty twenty-two. And it is expected to go through the end of June. So with our Cooper Creek water right, we have five hundred acre feet, which is approximately a hundred and sixty-three million gallons. That's about two and a half or two point seven. Months at an average demand of two million gallons. So we're, we will be in the same situation that we are this year, next year. And the reason I say twenty twenty-three is because we'd be through our construction. We'd have another summer. We'd be able to get the. The documentation, the data that we need from our demands, and then you'd be able to come back to the city council and make that presentation to you.
Did we not kind of decide this table list until we got approached by people outside of Miami?
Well, we discussed this in our department head meeting following this meeting, and we felt that maybe we didn't have all the necessary information for council. Um, so we knew that we'd reached out to um, Dire, we'd done the city's water master plan. But we hadn't got a response back from the Oregon Health Authority, whether we were required to do it or not. We had not received the estimate from GIS Solutions and their firm out of Corvallis that basically secured. Um, the city of Sutherland's water rights for the next fifty-plus years. Um, so we got that doc- documentation of that information after this. Um, staff, uh, council meeting on June fourteenth. So we just wanted to come back and give you guys a little more information. And request that we table this, um, until we get through construction.
Do we have a motion? Hold on, we need to have a a motion before we have a discussion.
So a motion to table it till two thousand twenty-three.
October two thousand.
Make a motion to table it till October two thousand twenty-three.
If an approved motion to table the water service city outside city limits until October twenty twenty-three. Now what do for this here?
Okay, well, my only. My only thing was. There were two things involved here. One of them was to hook up people outside the city limits that. Were already there, and then there was another part of it that other people could come and they could ask to be hooked up, right?
With the water man conservation, um, update. With the water man conservation update, and that's approximately twenty eight thousand dollars. And we'd also have to update or amend these company's plan and a couple of other documents. Either way.
And, and then, you know, that being, I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, that that whole process of the paperwork, a hundred man hours, but that's going to spread over a period of time to be able to get all this stuff together, which staff had asked for, you know, could be several months. Once you begin the process, pull the documents, things like that. Any other discussion?
The other part you were talking about, you were gonna start earlier. That's to prevent what's happening this year.
It is not. It's just the construction that's scheduled is gonna need a longer time to complete. So we needed to add another month to that. And honestly, that's it. In the real world, everything was smooth and we don't have any hiccups, so. COVID or, you know, some unforeseen things at the facility that we don't know about, you know, because basically that plant's, you know, it's built eighty two and it's kind of deteriorated from the inside out. So there's, you know, there could be some potential extensions because of that.
Is there some reason you couldn't even study the legal? I mean, does the rain cause a problem?
Well. We tried to with the Good Creek Reservoir, we have some issues with the water there. And it's mainly the manganese and later in the year we get to a point where it's so high, it's difficult to treat. And vice versa at the Mount Pearl plant, turbidity gets because it's it's the creek. So with the rainfall and stuff like that, we have a higher issue with turbidity. It's the organics that, you know, the rain comes into the creek. And there's potential that we wouldn't be able to meet our demand. So we had several meetings with engineer city staff regarding that window, that timeframe that we have, that we felt that we can do our shutdown and still meet the demand for the city.
I just wanted to add that there will be several on North Side Road that are going to be very disappointed.
Any other further discussion? Call for a vote.
Counselor Hamilton. To table until October twenty twenty three. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Sumner. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Vincent.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to planning commission budget committee appointments. Staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diane Harris, City Recorder. The city has one vacancy on the planning commission. However, we do have a planning commissioner that will be tentatively leaving at the end of this month. He's moving out of state. So we will potentially have two, however, it's not official. We only have one to fill, one position to fill, our vacancy. We received two applications. One was from a gentleman named Tom Maloney. He applied for both planning commission and budget committee. He stated that if he had to choose, he would rather choose planning over the budget. No offense. And and we also received an application from Alan Woods, who is, by the way, Lisa Woods' husband, who applied for council. So we are trying to fill one position. We have two applications and potentially another opening next month.
Mr. Maloney says he's only lived eleven months.
You only have to be a resident on the planning commission. There's only the qualifications for council. You have to be a resident for a year. But on any of the other committees and commissions, you just have to be a resident.
Okay, so councils make a motion to appoint one of the applicants. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been motion and seconded to appoint Tom Maloney to the planning commission term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Any discussion?
We also have an opening for the budget committee. I don't know if you want to fill that with the same motion or if you would rather do a separate.
No, one says just planning commission, the other is plan for both. Got the names switched in my thing here, so. I withdraw my second on Mr. Maloney. For the planning mission. Are we doing this all in one motion or?
That's what I'm wondering if you're doing it all in one motion or if you'd rather do it two separate.
I would need to do separate motions. Chad, any guidance here?
You can do it in one motion, but you have a motion on the table right now. So there's a motion to appoint. I forget which one. I apologize. Mr. Maloney, I think.
Yeah.
Boggs had withdrawn a second, so now you have to see if there's a second for that motion. If there's nothing, that motion would fail, and then you could do a combined motion if you wanted.
Is there a motion? Is there a second for that motion or do we want to drop? Your motion stands? I'm not hearing a second. So Chad, at this point, we've dropped that motion and asked.
You're saying that motion fails by lack of a second.
Okay, that motion fails.
You would say, is there, is there another motion that the council would like to make?
We're actually only filling one vacancy on the planning commission, but we also have a vacancy on budget, and he was willing to be on both. And then maybe next month, we will bring once that other positions. Exactly. Yeah, I was, I was telling you about it. Thank you.
Refresh my memory. Tom Maloney was only planning commission.
And budget, both.
Okay.
Yeah, and Alan Woods was planning.
Was planning.
I'd like to make the motion.
Or?
To appoint Alan Woods to the planning commission and Tom Maloney to the budget committee.
Second, also.
Can we have husband and wife on one committee like that on the planning commission? That's normally.
It's not really a problem. I mean, you know, you, you can create public these issues when you have people who are closely related or living together, serving on the same body because it limits their ability to talk to others. And with quasi judicial proceedings, they just need to make sure that they are not talking to each other outside of the thing about. So we could certainly, we could certainly provide them with some training on that and to make sure they can comply. So the, the short answer is it's not prohibited. There's some hurdles that they'll have to jump through to, to make sure that they comply with all the legal requirements.
Okay. So Counselor Hamilton, do that. Answer your question, your concern. So, but right now, we do have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And we do have a second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so we can move forward with any further discussion. So the motion, just to make sure that I've got this clear, is to appoint Alan Woods, the planning commission, and Tom Maloney to the budget committee. Is that correct? Okay. Alan Woods' term would end December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Tom Maloney's to the budget committee term ending in December thirty first, twenty twenty two. That's nominated. Any other, any further discussion?
Well, I didn't realize Lisa was on the. Not because of the relationship issue, but because that it's difficult to be at home and talk about and not talk about things you're involved in. So I don't. Say you couldn't do it. I mean, do you think you could do it?
This could be a solution for other things. So as we still have the motion and the second on the floor, any other, any further discussion? Okay, Chad, I'm gonna go call for a vote. We're good. Okay, call for a vote, please.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Grossman.
Yes.
Counselor Sumner. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Vincent. Motion carries.
So exit one thirty five, sign and approval updates. Call for staff report, community development.
So per the twenty one, twenty two council priority, it was to update, refresh, and sign exit one thirty five. So we've been working with. And one isn't. And if council was to move forward on one of those conceptual drawings, it would be the recommendation to go with the one where it's connected. And the reason being for the upgrade and for all the electrical, it'd be easier to. They're not, they have to be individual boring. Wiring connected to it, so it'd just be an easier and cleaner model there. So basically, it consists the same similar colors of our city logo, gray light channels, letters on car background, high density earthy boards, lighting, the subtle sign. The trees on the side would be all carved out and raised, and then the land of opportunity down here could be made out of metal, and it would be powder coated with reflective paint. So when the lights hit it, it would shine back on. It's estimated at twelve thousand dollars for the cost on this. And it is a suggested motion for council to approve the conceptual drawing at an estimated budget of twelve thousand.
We're there. Do I have a motion? Spend motion and seconded to approve the exit one thirty five sign improvement conceptual drawing and estimated budget amount of twelve thousand dollars as presented in the discussion.
These trees on the side, they're gonna be of foam.
It's high density earthy boards.
It's what most signs today.
They don't rot.
Cheaper replays.
They're not.
Yeah, and they have, they probably great depth. I mean, you know, it's a three dimensional. This could be pretty cool.
Where does this money come from?
We budgeted for it. It'll come from transit. This was supposedly supposed to have gotten done last year for the, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I should pass. So, but yes, and it was Counselor Whitaker two meetings ago. I've kind of put it on hold because the boards are so expensive because the way COVID went up. We finally got it down to a price that's reasonable. This is gonna be really, really nice. If you guys don't know, Adam Tsarnovsky does. He does all our work for us, just about the Christmas trees and the, the lights on Central. He all built, so it'll be good stuff.
Picture two.
Mr. Mayor, I, I didn't.
This one.
I already made the decision we're gonna go with that, and you don't get a decision.
As far as I'm concerned.
The reason you, you don't is because it's gonna be about thirty five thousand to do the other option. So this is a much better.
As, as far as I'm concerned, my personal opinion, I would follow staff's recommendation, what's gonna be the most economical, and that is putting all the letters together. I understand the complexity of lighting in this thing and having drill holes and everything else, or having one sign that's a single piece, everything that's connected. Yeah, I, I didn't really. For discussion.
Well, so far, we haven't had any vandalism down there, so.
Any, any further discussion?
Chad, can I ask a question?
Yes. No.
Why are you calling it land of opportunity in that? Because we changed our meme or our sign three years ago. We're southern in the land of opportunity now. No. We can't, I mean, that's still another portion, but.
So I'm gonna refrain from voting on this because I'm a direct contact with Adam on this project and building some of these pieces. So I'm gonna go, Chad, I feel that that would be appropriate. Is that, would you agree?
Yeah, so you want to declare an actual conflict of interest because you would have a financial interest in the decision?
That's correct. So I'm declaring a conflict of interest in this project and this motion, so I am not voting.
So by having one.
By having.
By having one continuous line. Yes, goes out, all of it goes out. But it's easily repaired.
Yes, it's easily repaired.
No, no. Good question, though.
I can check with Adam to see if there's some kind of coating that we could put over the top of it, maybe help keep some of that dirty stuff, maybe. I'm not sure, but I can check into it.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Sumner. Counselor Boggs. And Counselor Whitaker. Motion carries.
Right, so moving on, strategic plan update, inventory inspect all city structural facilities, develop maintenance funding plan. Call the force director.
Mr. Mayor, may I also just interfere for just a second? Because you were the mayor, you set the agenda. He brought up a very, very good recommendation, which we're gonna continue to do. And that is, in the past, we just let the let it stand and this be as a matter of the record in terms of the agenda. But one of the, one of the suggestions, which I yeah, it's a great suggestion. I'm not gonna say it's brilliant, but it's right up there. Here's brilliance, and this is the mayor's suggestion. And that is, we ought to at least give some sort of verbal narrative or overview of what it is, so it's reflected in the minutes. So that other people who may not want to dig through the entire agenda to see that thing can at least get us a thirty thousand foot overview of it. So going from here forward, this is what staff are doing, and I just wanted to point that out as a change.
That's one public works. As it states in the staff report, this is a real complex council priority. I haven't had the time to devote to it, to bring you guys to to bring this forward. So we hope to do that in February of twenty twenty two. So as you can imagine, it's multifaceted. It goes from paint to windows to moving to HVAC units and a lot of stuff, so complicated. So we have to bring this back to you in February.
So that doesn't coincide with the full time employee needed to.
That's different. Yeah.
Thank you. And then.
I'll just roll right in.
Full time employee added.
Yeah, but, well, as you know, through the budget process, we came to you and asked with new wastewater treatment plan. That we were understaffed, and we needed to add one FTE to. To meet these user requirements. And so, we did that. We hired that. Person July first. Got him from McCall Creek. Treatment plant, folks down there. He's a great fit. He's real capable. He lives right next to the wastewater plant, so. A lot of times, we hire somebody, it takes six months before we can integrate him into our. On-call system and our weekend work and that sort of thing, but the guy's felt real confident, so he's already doing that. He's already working weekends and taking after-hours calls. He's that, he's capable. They all like him. He fits in. So, we can be happier, and it's worked out, and it's given our. Staff with that extra person a little more time to delve into these. You know, deeper maintenance issues and things that were maybe getting pushed to the side just because we were understaffed, so it worked out real well.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next report is Tree City USA Community Development.
So, councils being asked to consider the city as suddenly becoming one of the thirty-five. City USA is a program that has been greening up cities and towns across America since nineteen seventy-six. This has been around a while. There's basically four. Functions. Every year are to be a tree city USA. So, the tree city USA, city must be four-surrounded, maintain a street. Tree board or department, which would be the faculty advisory committee. That would meet that one standard. Having new tree ordinance, if council moves forward with this recommendation, we come back on September thirteenth with this ordinance. Spending at least two dollars per capita, that's roughly around seventeen thousand dollars, but there's several items. That pertain to that, so we can reach that, and what I thought, talking to staff, that we could make up a spreadsheet, so we could have it at public works. Development, and we also have it at the back, so we can track our hours, so we could make sure we meet that every year, because it's, it's a, it's a number of seventeen thousand dollars. We had a project that out at Ford's Pond that would have qualified for that. It was over seventeen thousand dollars for the Oak Savannah that would have qualified. So, I think we could reach that. And the last one, you would have to have an annual event, Arbor's Day. And what the thought process is that we'd reach out to. I'm gonna ask the forest, BLM, some of these private timber companies, and see if they would donate some trees. Parks Advisory Committee, which would be the board, would put on this event and offer these trees to our community. This board, though, basically would be for trees on city property, not private property. So, it is a suggested motion from the Parks Advisory Committee and city staff to become a tree city USA, and I will open that up to questions.
I just wanna clarify, it's not an ordinance, so it's a resolution, right? We're not gonna do.
It's state's ordinance.
Think it's an ordinance because then it.
No.
The kind of trees and our development vote actually does.
No, there, there's two pieces to it, though, right? Aren't you gonna adopt the tree city by resolution? And then we'll create ordinances that support the policies.
Yes.
Laid out by the system itself.
A tree care ordinance.
Right, okay, I just, I just know reading through the documentation that we had to do in order to bring that to the council.
Well. Yeah, okay.
We bring a resolution and all that back on.
And then we'll create ordinances over time, not a ordinance, but there may be a number of ordinances related to the whole tree program going over time. But then that becomes part of your municipal code, which is the law. And so, that's what I'm trying to differentiate, right? Because once again, as you know, I'm all-knowing and never wrong.
Yeah.
Just to correct Jerry, since he's never wrong. It's just a my strategy, you have to do the ordinance before, it's one of like the prerequisites to become a tree city, that you have the ordinance in place. So, you have to do the. In order to qualify as a tree city. So, it's not like you can qualify and then do it over time. You've gotta do that first.
That, that one, or, yes, I got you. My bad, I didn't explain myself well.
Thank you very much, Chad. Counselor Hamilton, you have a comment.
So, your question was last Thursday, and so that they. It says.
Yeah, so.
It was, so that was actually the second discussion regarding tree city USA, but at that meeting on the twelfth, it was a recommendation from.
Now, it's a recommendation from the Parks Advisory Committee to the.
And Counselor Whitaker is the leader of the band on this. It was his. He should be commended. He really should. Thank you. He's real visionary.
So, just a question that I have to have it on record, not the city staff looking for more projects, more things to add to your list. What does becoming a tree city USA ultimately do for our community? What, what benefit is it gonna give our community, aside from additional tasks, time, paperwork, things like that? Trying to help everybody understand.
It, one of the things it does is it brings people to town. Because. Otherwise, there wouldn't be seventy-five or seventy-six cities in the state that have become a tree city. It's, it's really well-known, and when people go to a city that is a tree city, then they just, they think that's really neat. You know, we care about the look of the town, we care about the trees that are planted, we care about shade, we care about helping. Environment. That, that's what it's all about.
Makes it a better place to live because. It, it, it causes shade for people, it causes beauty for your, for your community, it adds oxygen to your town. And it just, it makes it a better, happier place for people to come.
The other thing is that along with this is a tree guide. And tree guide, basically, is.
I didn't include it in your packet.
Right. It's been, it was put together by Oregon College, Washington Colleges. And it has all kinds of information in it, but it basically talks about what trees can you have in your field. Not, you can't go to the homeowner, and so you have to plant this kind of tree.
Correct.
But, but it's a guide for the city, and anybody that sends in the dust construction that builds. Stuff that belongs to the city. I'm thinking about the. Business park out there that we're gonna build, and it's gonna have a lot of landscaping trees and stuff. It tells those people what kind of trees they can plant, how, how big they are, how much room they take, how to plant them.
How much water they need.
Yeah, it's really.
Along that line, I was surprised when the Ford's Pond project was happening in the parking lot, how much landscaping trees and such had to be part of that. Trees all over, why do we need it in the parking lot? But that's part of having that, that identification and that atmosphere. Yeah, so. That's the only question I had. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Counselor Boggs?
Explain. So, explain what this means that two dollars per capita.
Per person.
According to this news the other night, is that Southern is one of the top six counties in the. Douglas County is one of the top six cities with COVID exposure at like eighty-nine percent per capita. And that's, so, I just wanted to, what the hell do you mean?
Basically, two dollars per.
So, this is, well, there's one more quick question. This seventeen thousand dollars. Is that a yearly expense or one time?
It's yearly.
It's yearly, but it's easy to read. It's because all of the hours that our people put in, the staff. Count per dollar, in kind, and counts for in kind of like, whatever the going rate is, twenty-seven dollars and something an hour. At Ford's Pond. We could do those four hundred trees, we have to track that because of the grants. Almost twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's pretty easy to come up with seventeen thousand dollars. So, it's not out of. But.
Not out of time, basically. Thank you very much. And he's already spoken quite a bit, but city manager report, you got thirty seconds.
I had a promise for the finance director, was that we are going through the process of giving you all new pads. Most are over ten years old. And so, right, so we're gonna proceed with. Doing it. What?
We need to make a. A motion for.
It's just a report.
No, it's just, it's just a report. I think moving forward, if we wanna have a motion on it, we can bring that back to the next.
Right.
The next. Did, let me ask. Let me ask council, is this, is this something that we wanna move forward with? The, the Parks Advisory Committee is unanimous, and there's your work for this, so. We wanna continue and move this through council and. And jump on this train. Okay. All right, I think that is a consensus, so we'll discuss that in our future council meeting. For our games. So, city manager report done? Fantastic.
We'll be getting your iPads are pretty soon.
Debbie says hers is fine. I know yours won't hold a charge.
Technology.
I don't know. How about everybody else are really excited about a new one? You don't know, but you can just, okay, you're right with the new one. You don't even. I don't know. Do you have problems? He, his won't hold a charge. We've got issues. We've just got some technology connectivity issues on some of them, so. They won't update anymore.
Same level, so we're gonna get you all new ones.
There you go.
City manager will. Yes, city manager will, will reach out and discuss this, if you have any problems, and make sure that.
I think this is like the.
Yeah.
You can't update anything. Okay.
So, as, as we're moving on, council comments. We'll start to my right, Counselor Hamilton. You say, you're the technology guy over here.
It's my.
Counselor Hamilton.
You know, I, that's done. I'll ask about.
Uh, we brought a cold patch, but as the boy said, they, they patched it with what we had left. Yeah.
Okay, well, nobody.
We just got a new shipment in too, so we can top it off if it's settled.
Excellent, Counselor Grousman.
I would give like a very recommendation to, a, a shout-out to Jerry Gillum for keeping us a tree.
Excellent, Counselor Boggs.
I have not seen it myself, but, but somebody's mentioned to me that the railroad crossing is that. One or some of the. Whatever the.
It's terrible to rail. We have.
It's better than Sixth Street, I don't know if you want to do anything about that.
It's Winston Sixth Street.
There's something that flops up or something.
It's not connected to the ties underneath. We've, Brian's been in contact with. Railroad folks numerous times as I buy, and they promised we're gonna fix it, and have you have to give us a time.
This is the railroad company that have like emotional people to contact.
They don't seem to answer the many bites. They're very.
They don't get on it at all. Oh, right here, well.
Anyway, it isn't that bump, and we're aware of it. We've been shot many, many, many times.
Thank you. Counselor Whitaker.
Okay, last week, or last evening, I talked about the, the old mortuary building. And I, somebody cleaned up some of the stuff, but one of the things that really is an eye sore is that there's a big tree over there. Standing right on the corner. And it's forty feet high. It seems like to me that we ought to get the property under to knock that thing down before the branch falls off and hit somebody on the head. Besides that, it makes the city look a lot better without a big oak tree up there instead.
Does something we look into? Thank you. I mean, over, over the sidewalk, over the street. I can see if you're walking morning that being played across Central.
Now that we're tree city, we want to check that out.
Thank you very much. Any else? Okay, the only thing I have, I just.
Michelle.
I think you skipped off. I'm just, I'm in, I'm in a role. Counselor Sumner.
First of all, welcome, Sean. And I wanna say that I love the tree city USA idea. I think it's outstanding. I love trees, so, any help you need or any volunteer.
All right, Mike. So, again, just thanking all of our candidates. That applied and shared backgrounds and everything else for the council position. Appreciate your desire to be a part of the community. Want to thank city staff, as we're going through the worst drought that we can remember, the ups and downs of sending out notices. Helping concerned and angry citizens. Understand the perplexity and the, the things that we go through as a community. I think this has opened a lot of people's eyes that. Always live in Oregon and think that water is in abundance, and why should we ever have, have an issue? So, again, thank you to staff and everybody that's been on point, and appreciate the state working with us and being considerate. And helping us work through the process, so, other than that, looking forward to activities and a few other fun things later on this month. With, I believe we're still on track with the concert, country concert, that hasn't changed. We're gonna rock and roll and, and party hard.
And BlackBerry this weekend.
And BlackBerry's coming up this weekend, so it's, we get a busy rest of the month, so, thank you, everyone in the community that's helping these things move forward. Last year, we missed out on a lot of things, and people are ready to enjoy it, so just ask everybody to, to be safe. Do what they feel is, is best as far as being out and about with everybody, and. Appreciate. Jared, you have a, a comment or question?
No, you have a.
Yes, I do. That's my next. So, public comment, the public's a public comment. Present information regarding items off the agenda, timely with three minutes for a citizen child apply, and Barbara Cameron. You have been very patient through our long process here. Well, thank you. If you would please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and share with us for a couple minutes.
My name is Barbara Cameron, C.A.M.I.N. My resume is four nine seven.
That's better.
I did have two things to ask about this question, and Mayor has just answered one in this. Comments about the anger of citizens. That's about the restrictions on this with the ground. And I was going to ask what comments if we had been going there. So, I guess I don't know. So. Can someone perhaps see you in that gray t-shirt? A friend of mine and myself are interested in how. Our use of the water is monitored. Other than on our monthly bill. To comply with the restrictions, is there anything that's, I'm happy to comply, but I will just wonder. To comply with the restriction system, anything that's, I'm happy to comply, but I'm just wondering, so.
We we have no way of. Of of really policing that request that everybody water on odd days if their address is odd or even days for address. And then even number, we we hope that people do. But we don't have a way to monitor that through the meters or the. Or the billing process or anything like that other than.
That's what I thought, it's pretty much by the meters, but we we're just curious. We understand, we have to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, we are adjourned.